I will call the meeting of the Select Board to order on October 25, 2024. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Born TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. See anyone? Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line. Zoom meeting ID is 895-9907-4498. Password is all capitals, WORKSHOP. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise hand icon and the chair until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. First item on the agenda, oh, first I will note that in person are Peter Meyer, Mary James Strangeland, Anne Marie Saronian, Select Board members Melissa Ferretti and Gina Zerovitz are attending via Zoom. All votes will be by roll call. I will also note for anyone wondering, do I have my phone here? I have the ringer on in my phone, which I don't usually do. My husband's at Falmouth Hospital, and he may need to call me. Public comments and non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? No, so we can skip the explanation. Next item is policy workshop marijuana. Discuss how to address information submitted after the application deadline. So, is Brian gonna talk first, or? Brian, are you gonna make a couple of comments to us about this and how you suggest we proceed?
Sure. I can just give you some very brief comments. As you all know, at this point, you received two emails with some additional information following both rounds of interviews. Both emails were from a party saying they represented one of the applicants. So, under the sort of procedures that you created in your RFA, all information was supposed to be submitted as of the deadline for applications. But there was text in the RFA that allows you to deviate from your rules if you choose to do so. More generally, while we modeled that process off of procurement process, which is largely familiar to everybody, it's not a procurement. It's not governed by statute and the board, you know, is really considering applications to negotiate our host community agreement, which is something where it has brought up discretion. So, you really have discretion to choose how you deal with this information. I think the two biggest principles I suggested that you follow are, one, which is what you're doing right here, is to disclose this publicly into all of the applicants and to make sure that your deliberations are on the record so that no one's surprised and everybody knows what's going on. And second, if you ultimately decide that you're gonna consider the additional information, that you allow a reasonable period for other applicants submit whatever else they may choose to submit to. You know, that way, everybody has an equal opportunity. If following the interviews, they think additional information may be useful, to submit that to the board for your consideration. Because at the end of the day, you know, with, again, you have quite a bit of discretion within your scoring matrix and, you know, law to consider these different applications, their merits, and who, if anybody, is best qualified to negotiate an agreement. And our real concern is just making sure that our procedure is transparent, that it gives everybody an equal opportunity to submit materials for consideration to the board. And then that way, if it's ever challenged in the future, we don't have a procedural issue because of this or anything else. Well, that's, that's my sort of opening two cents. I'm obviously happy to answer any questions as we go along. But I think we've taken a good first step in dealing with this and putting this on at the board meeting and making sure that it's fully transparent to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Anne Marie?
So, question. So, one of the options you talked about was that if we did allow for the applicant to have material after the ex, after the application date, and that we would open it up to all applicants, that was your recommendation. Is that, does that also mean that we're opening up the process? Or are we just, because if it does, then who's to say, someone doesn't come in and say, "Oh, I legitimately missed the expiration date, I'm submitting my application." Can we, can we be as specific to, we're only going to allow the applicants that we received to submit additional information?
Yes, I think you can. I'm not suggesting that you open this up to new applicants. I'm just suggesting that if we're gonna consider additional information from one applicant, that we give the other applicants the opportunity to submit stuff too. There may be other applicants who wanna submit something and simply didn't, you know, aren't doing it because under the procedures, they think they're not supposed to. So, I think you can certainly limit it to the five or six that you already have without reopening this to everybody else.
Anybody else?
Gene, can you answer?
Gene?
Hi. I guess my question is, with additional information, would you recommend we put parameters on that or limits on that, or just say, any additional information can be submitted? Just so we don't get hit with, with loads of documents or, you know, be sure you're there, you know, all true.
Yeah. In this type of, you know, sort of proceeding, if you will, I usually suggest that just let anybody submit whatever they wanna submit. I mean, at the end of the day, if you don't think it's relevant, then you don't have to consider it. But then there's no question that everybody had equal opportunity to put whatever they wanted to put before you. And, you know, again, if there's ever a legal challenge going forward, it's one less potential issue on the table.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else?
I thought Macy was gonna say something.
Melissa, do you have anything to add or ask?
I mean, I think, I think, you know, Anne Marie D. and Gina already touched on, I think my concern was, you know, what does that mean exactly? Are we, you know, telling people we're open to new applications? Are we saying, you know, you can submit documents that are related to the kind of the ones that were submitted, but Brian answered all of that. So, I won't waste time re-asking, thank you.
Any comments, Peter?
Not right now.
So, I do wanna note that we received, we did receive a letter this morning. I don't know if everyone saw the email from Liz that the Born Cana applicant representative sent a letter to the board about the process and addressing his, his comments. It came through the town administrator to the board through that proper process. So, if you haven't read that, that's something you might wanna consider reading. So, the, what additional information? And whether we should consider additional information? You know, one of the options that Town Council did say is that we don't accept additional information. We just say that what we got in the application and in the interviews is what we consider. Information that we did get, which was related, can we, we can just say, right? It was related to the ownership of Mello Greens, the percentage of ownership of owners that hadn't been documented in the app, in the proposal, was in direct, was an answer to a question that was asked in the interview. But at the interview, it was not available or not decided. So, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't have a preference either way. I'm, I, it's...
I think that we should adhere to the process. Yes, you asked the question, and, and the individual, I don't know if I can say the name, Mello Greens responded, correct? I don't think that we can't not still have qualitate, quantitative analysis and give points to that section of our criteria based on the information we were given.
You mean during the process or after the process? Or after the process?
No, during this process, you asked the question, the question was answered, right? So, we have the scoring criteria, and in that particular section that that question came from, that is not the only points attainable for that section, correct? So, the individual can still get, the applicant can still attain points in that section. It doesn't negate all the points out of that section. There is, there was partial ownership proved, right?
It wasn't proved, it was stated. These people are owners. There was no percentages, there was no documentation.
No, but there was articles of org, of organization, right? There was a corporate, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, but it didn't list those owners.
Not, not the additional owners. Right, not the, not the owners that you questioned.
Right.
Okay? So, I think it would be different if we didn't have any information whatsoever, and the question wasn't answered or asked.
I think the answer to the question when I asked what the ownership percentage of, you know, the documentation?
Right.
The answer was that the account was working on that.
No, but I thought that he gave the percentages at that point in time.
Can I speak to it?
You gave, because I think I wrote it down.
Yeah. Can I speak to it?
Yeah.
I think I wrote that down.
I don't know, I don't know.
I think I wrote that down.
I don't know.
Let me check my chicken scratch. It was verbally stated with a handshake. And then I believe the, the percentages were verbally given at that time.
I'd have to go back and look at the transcript.
Yeah. So, I, I think it's important to adhere to the process.
Okay.
I think there was a checklist of what was, what was done, whether the applicant thought that that was enough. I mean, how do we, you know, they checked that box. Yeah. I think we open ourselves up to more litigation after the fact when we award the HCAs if we don't stick to the process and what we originally voted on. That's just my opinion. But I also don't think that it's, it's, we still have the ability to, based on, you know, what, the packet and the interview.
There's no disqualification.
There is no disqualification. Okay, there you go. I just said it.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was the...
There's no disqualification.
It's a matter of points. Okay, so, I don't know. I mean, I think, I'm gonna sort of combine the next steps. If we were, if we were to, if we were to decide that we were not gonna consider that information that was present, that was received very shortly after, so, if we were to say we weren't gonna consider that up, that, then we would, I assume, then go ahead and submit our scores and then have a meeting to discuss the scores, right?
Right.
If we decide that we are gonna accept that information and allow other applicants an opportunity to, to submit additional information, then we'd need a period of time for additional applicants to submit information, at which case, we would need to have a meeting to discuss it or disclose? How do we disclose that additional information from additional, from applicant, other applicants?
So, you could have a meeting and say, essentially list the additional information that you've received from, since the original deadline closed?
Right.
And then you would deliberate on, you would deliberate on kind of your scores?
I mean, it was simply a matter of accepting, because we haven't, as a board, deliberated at all on the applicants.
Not yet.
We have done, like, sort of individual evaluations of the criteria based on our interpret, individual interpretation of the criteria to come up with an individual score that then is gonna be cumulative. So, we could have a meeting and just list the additional documentation.
You could.
It's just to be added. It would add, it adds time to the process. So, the question, part of my consideration on whether to have this considered or not considered is, it doesn't, the additional information, if I were to consider it, doesn't really change my opinion. Doesn't change my scoring, so I don't know if it's relevant. And I don't know if that's true for, and that's kind of, I think, what you were getting at.
Yeah, and what other relevant information with the other applicants? I mean, is it, you know, what other relevant information? Because they, you know, the, I mean, we had this criteria.
Yeah.
So, what other relevant information do we need? Or would ask for, or that they could submit? Like, could they elaborate more on their business plan? Could they elaborate more? I, I mean, what other relevant, how much more relevant information do we need? Because we got a lot, those binders were big.
So, I think that, that it's, it's almost important for people to state that additional information would not change their rating. Because if it would change your rating, then we have to open it up to all the applicants.
Right.
I think, in my opinion, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And that, you have to kind of make, you know, kind of be willing to say that additional information did not change my rating on that, on that criteria.
I think at this point, I, I know for a fact that the scores that I have already done for each of the applicants would not change if the information was not allowed. It's not gonna make that, it's not gonna make a difference to me. But, I don't know. I guess waiting to see what else people wanna do.
Any comments from Zoom?
Uh, I, yeah, I can understand the struggle, and I can understand the anxiety of the other applicants, but in all honesty, I, this isn't gonna affect the score I've done either. And I think that it would be belaboring the process at this point, and there's also time considerations for all the applicants as well. So, I think we should move this along. And, yeah, I'd agree, it's not changing the scores.
I mean, I agree. I think if it's not, it's not, it's not changing the score, right? So, I think we need to move on as well. I do, I do, of course, appreciate Brian's advice to maybe give a period where if, for some reason, somebody feels that they may wanna submit something, it might be a fair, you know, it might give it that, that fair look to the process, but at the same time, the point is that, that the stuff that was submitted, it isn't giving extra points. So, therefore, you know, who could argue with? But you never know, right? Somebody might have said, "I wanted to, you know, submit whatever," and then we didn't allow it. So, I, I kinda, I will kinda defer to Town Council, right? That's sort of my thought. I'm not a lawyer, and I never pretend to be one, even in my real estate. We learned that lesson in the beginning. So, I don't know. I do agree we wanna move it on, our people have been waiting. I think, you know, they've done the hard work to give us these.
So, I, it seems to me, we received a letter from Born Cana, which was one of the applicants stating that they did not have additional information that they wanted to submit, right? He said that in the letter?
Oh, yeah.
Said, "We, we don't have additional information." So, we have other applicants that are here that could state whether or not they, at this point in time, based on whether they have additional information that they'd like to submit, and that could be part of our deliberation as to whether, and I don't know if there's anyone here from, other applicants that would like to say whether or not they would like to submit additional information or whether they'd like us to move on with the process.
You have four in the room, and there's one online, so that's five, that means five of the sixes. BC is Born Cana online. BC was Born Cana, and then it changed the name.
We don't have them all represented here, though.
We're missing one.
So, do you wanna hear or not?
I don't think it'll change my outcome, the outcome.
Brian, any thoughts on based on our deliberation?
Um, I, I think you're doing fine. I mean, you know, I don't wanna say what the board is thinking, but it sounds to me like you're all inclined to just not accept it and not consider it. And that's a perfectly reasonable outcome. You set rules, and if you don't think that it's useful to you to accept additional information, then you can stick to your rules, and it sounds like it wouldn't have mattered anyway, so.
However, the additional information that was received was based on the question that was asked. So, I mean, to me, it's, it's information, it's, it's, it's not gonna sway. You know, it's just, it's just inherent to what, you know, when you ask the question, who are the, who own the other forty-nine percent? And he was only just putting that and writing in an affidavit after the fact. So, I mean, I think the information isn't, you know, it's not that big a deal, you know, that was submitted.
But you're, by saying that, you're saying that you are using the information that was submitted to make a judgment.
I'm not, I know, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the information, I'm just saying what the information was. That's all I'm saying.
The information in the process by the answer to the question, no different than any other question we asked anybody else and got information from, which weighs into our, into our scoring.
I think, I have to go back.
It's a matter of written versus verbal. That's really what it is. And I probably, I'm pretty sure I have written down from my originals, yeah, forty, forty-nine percent for, not, it was forty-nine percent for handshake. I wrote it down.
Yeah.
No documents, but handshake.
Yeah. So, that's, that's, that's the information that we would be considering for evaluation, forty-nine percent.
Forty-nine percent.
Handshake.
Divided between Anna, Emily, and Mitchell.
Yeah, handshake, no documentation.
Handshake, no documentation, that's what I wrote down.
So, that is the, the criteria then for, if we do not accept additional information.
Let's let him speak.
Is the board ready to have a motion or a vote?
I make a motion that we not accept the additional information after the application deadline for, from Mello Greens.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Gene. Is there any further discussion? Seeing done, it's a roll call vote. Gene?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
And MJ votes yes, five zero zero. So, given that, the board will complete their criteria ratings based on the application and the interviews without considering additional information. And what's our, when do we wanna get these to, uh, when do we wanna get these to Town Administrator? Does everybody have them ready so that, like, I mean, I think everybody had them, and then we, we put a pause on it.
If you got the electronic copy, we just have to submit those, right?
Yes, and it's just the rate, it's just the numbers.
Just the numbers with the total score.
Just, yes. So, um...
By the end of the day, Monday, so that way it gets through the business day, or guess?
Yeah, I mean, is it by Monday, Monday afternoon?
I'm fine on Monday.
Um, I don't know what the date is on Monday, I should... So, we'll get them to the Town Administrator's office by Monday at 5:00 PM, 4:30. And when, huh, when will they be up on the website?
It'll take me a day or two.
So, I think the previous, the thirtieth, you wanna do that, by Wednesday, close the business? Or do you want Halloween?
Yeah, by Thursday.
Okay. Up on the website by Thursday, 10:31. And then...
Need to meet, right?
Then we, that once, then we need a meeting to meet and deliberate on the scores as they, on the cumulative scores.
But once we, have we opened ourselves up by submitting our scores in advance, and they go online to post them, and then we're gonna talk about and deliberate afterwards on the scores some people may wanna change? Are we opening ourselves up for any litigation by doing that?
What do you mean?
We have to post the scores.
I know, but, no, but my, I, I know that, but once we post them, then we're gonna deliberate after the fact on the scores that are posted?
No, we're deliberating on who we're gonna offer agreements to.
Right.
Remember, you have to have a narrative for...
Remember, you have to have a narrative for every single application, explaining in narrative form the reasons.
Right.
Why it's moving forward or it's not moving forward.
And that's a board narrative.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a, it's a person.
Right.
So we, and, and we don't know, go ahead, Melissa.
So the narrative is gonna come from the select board as a whole?
Yes.
We're not supposed to be writing narratives for each and every decision that we gave less or a better point, correct?
Well.
No.
Well, you don't write a narrative for it, but you should be able to say if, if, you know, if what your score, why your score, you should have, have some sort of. Brief understanding about why your score is what it is. Like, there was no board resident, so they got zero points for board, for, for board or something.
I understand.
They weren't social equity applicants.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, and common sense. I, I, I hope it scored mine very logically, so.
Right. Yeah.
That won't be a problem. Okay, thank you.
Um. So.
But the deliberation isn't, we, the scores aren't connected to who we give the H C A to. The scores are an opportunity to obviously.
Well, they're, they're an opportunity to see where, where, where we are, but you, if, suppose there's.
To quantify and, and, yeah.
Six applicants with sixty-five. And then you, then you have to find another criteria for deciding. I mean, we can't assume that their scores are gonna be one, two, three.
Right, right, well, that's, you do that through deliberation.
You know, I re- I realize that.
Yeah. And then, yeah, so, that's what we're deliberating on. You're, no one's asking anybody to change their score.
No.
However, a board member might change their score based on deliberation of comments that other people said. That they hadn't thought of and say, well, you know what, I, especially if there's multiple scores on the same nu- number.
Understood.
So we're gonna deliberate on the applicants.
We're gonna deliberate on the ratings and the next step of who we're gonna make offers to.
At that point in time. Oh, so at that meeting, are we voting on who we're making offers to, or?
We're voting on our narrative.
Okay.
And who we're making offers to based on the narrative, 'cause one thing, Brian, you said at the beginning, Brian. Something about who best qualified to go forward with an H C A.
Correct, if anybody, you know, if the applicant could be nobody.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting it should be, I'm just saying it's, you know. It could be one, it could be more than one, it could be zero. That's, you know, that's the decision you have to make.
Okay. Jean?
Uh, will town council have a chance to review the limited amount of finders or applications? Just to overlook before we have a discussion and make an offer?
No.
Okay.
No, no, I think we, I think what we, I think what we said was. If we were gonna have town council review, that it would be after. Kind of we decide these, these three people and then does.
At the H C A staff.
At the H C A.
Right.
Town council will be involved in the H C A.
Yeah.
Because, just because we are negotiating H C A doesn't mean we're gonna come to agreement on an H C A.
Right.
This is a wonderful process. Okay, so, we need to come up with a date. For when we're gonna have this meeting to deliberate.
Can we do it on the fifth?
It's election day.
Oh, that's right.
The fifth is election, so we don't have a meeting on the, uh, we don't have, we're gonna have a, like, a, like, this is our last meeting for a while. So we can always put in another meeting, but, so, we don't, there's no meeting on the week of the fifth. And then the, we, the meeting on November twelfth is a pretty big meet, we have a lot, but we're not meeting next week, right? We're not meeting on the twenty-ninth for sewer.
No.
Okay, so. We could choose an alternate time during the week of November fifth. To have a meeting if you would like to deliberate that week. I mean, I.
I'm in California, so.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that.
If the time works, but.
Three hour difference?
Well, I don't, what's your available, availability while you're in California? Do you have time to be able to do a meeting and what time of day in California?
No, it's during the day. Um, Friday's out, you know, Monday and Friday is. Work stuff, so in the middle of the week there's time, after election day, I guess.
How about the seventh?
I am not here on the seventh. I am in Rantham all day.
So that leaves the sixth. Which I may be. In Chicago, but depends on the time.
We can just go to fall in the week, this way we know everybody can be here.
Yeah, the following week would be better.
The eleventh, if not Mondays, or it doesn't interfere, whatever.
The eleventh is Veterans Day.
Oh.
We're meeting on the twelfth?
Yeah.
We are meeting on the twelfth. And it's a long, it's gonna be a long, it, yeah, we can't do it. It has to be separate. I'm not doing it on a regular meeting night.
It's a long agenda. That's fine.
Fourteenth?
G O T has a meeting on the fourteenth at three before, through the casket.
That's at six.
At six.
Six, okay.
As opposed to the eighteenth, which is the Bridges meeting. Eleven fourteen is the Brail, the Trail meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
At six P M.
Mm-hmm.
And eleven eighteen is the, um.
Open house?
Mastah Bridge Open House, twelve to three and five to eight, they have two slots.
Mastah Bridge Open House. What was the sixth you said? The sixth you might not be available, or?
The sixth I can't do the afternoon, and if, if Jean needs the afternoon, the sixth, I can't be here for it for the sixth, I'm already booked.
I'm waiting on Gabrielle.
Oh, you might be in Chicago, you said.
Well, I will most likely be in Chicago. She's getting sworn in that day.
Yeah, okay.
Can we do, just do it early on the fourteenth?
I just don't know what time it's at. I could zoom from there. What's the matter with the fourteenth? You can't do the fourteenth?
No, I can do the fourteenth.
We just do it early in the data, so, you know, because we, we know we have that meeting at six o'clock, so we can do it late afternoon, like three or four.
Well, I, I need times, I need, and I need times from the people who have the most difficulty scheduling. What they can do on November fourteenth for a meeting that would be done by five o'clock.
I can do between ten and five.
Same here.
I'm good.
Melissa, what's your schedule for Thursday, November fourteenth?
Oh, I only have seven things already scheduled that day. Uh, um. I have back to back the entire day, all but between two and six, and I do need to find a time to eat, so.
So, two thirty.
Yeah, two thirty to, I mean, yeah, the, the.
Well, it shouldn't take us that long, so, November fourteenth.
And I'm postoperative, so I'm gonna be in trouble, but I'm gonna try. But yeah, if it's at after two thirty, I should be able to drag my butt onto the computer, but I won't be able to be there in person.
So, three P M?
Cause I'm not supposed to drive until the two weeks. Duh. I won't be out of the hot water by then.
Three o'clock works.
Well, three.
Three o'clock.
Yeah.
Three. Can you do three?
Three o'clock would be a yes. Cause my E J C meeting and my environmental justice council is until six, and I, I can log into that, they know I'm not coming in person.
Okay.
That work for you?
Mm-hmm. Okay, three P M, November fourteenth. Deliberations. Marlene, can you ask Kathleen to let Board Community TV know, like, now, that that will be a workshop that we're having, cause. So she can schedule her staff for the off meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right then, is there anything else that we need to discuss on this issue? So, I think we're good, our, well, we're gonna get our, our ratings in by Monday afternoon, ten twenty-eight, they'll be posted by Thursday, ten thirty-one. And the board will deliberate on November fourteenth. I just wanna remind applicants who are here that the board cannot deliberate directly with applicants. That any communication or questions about the ratings or the process needs to go through the town administrator's office. Okay.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion to recess until one o'clock by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
M J, yes, five zero zero. Thank you. 1 o'clock. So I will call the select board meeting.
Motion to reconvene.
Back into order? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, because I made a motion to recess.
I seconded and we did a roll call vote.
Yeah, but can't I just call it back?
You can call it back into. Yeah, I don't think we have to vote it back into.
We just recessed and I just call it back into order.
Because the part of the motion is that you're going to call it back.
We call it back at 1 o'clock.
Yeah.
It was a recess till 1.
Right.
So reconvene 1 o'clock. And so we have Jean Nazerovitz and Melissa Ferretti on Zoom. You're attending, it's not a joint meeting. And it's not going to be a joint meeting because you don't have a quorum.
We have to send the peanut brownie.
Yeah. So we have four members of the wastewater advisory committee. I don't see anyone from wastewater on Zoom. So, and then also Bob Dwyer's here, just as a community representative. So we do not have a quorum of the wastewater advisory committee. If someone else comes, we can call that meeting to order to attend this meeting. I did hear from Wayne Sampson, Peter Holmes, and Kathy Fox Alfondo that they could not attend, so.
Is John Duggan, John Duggan part of that committee?
John Duggan is part of the committee, and he has been coming, and Chris Hilberg is part of the committee. So there, I don't know what's going on with them. Those are the two that we're missing, right? We have four, five, six, seven. Two we don't know about. If either Chris or John shows, we'll call the meeting to order. Okay, so here we are. Let me get to my. Policy workshop, comprehensive wastewater management plan, discussion with environmental partners, review of draft MIPA submission and public participation schedule before town meeting. Okay, who is going to begin?
Why don't we hand it over to Kate to have her walk you through the MIPA filing?
Okay, and then there's, is in the cover letter. A lot of questions that they're looking to have answered, so.
Action items and decisions, right? Is that what you're referring to?
Yep. All right, let's begin. Kate?
Absolutely. I'm going to share my screen if that's helpful. I'm just going to be reviewing what was sent in the memo and all the attachments. So it's the 76-page guy. This one?
Yep.
So absolutely, I'll walk through. We did our best in this memo to summarize what we had talked about at our last workshop. So that's basically this first page. I summarized and sent along the action items that we had determined after the last meeting.
Can you increase the zoom on that?
Those, but exactly to your Kate. We absolutely have the decision list for the select board.
Kate, can you zoom in, please?
Can you zoom in? We can't see that at all. We're not on Zoom, so.
Thank you.
How's that?
That's a little bit better. Okay, thank you.
I might be a little too far here again. We'll walk through the decision list, and then I can also show the revised attachments. We updated by adding more cost breakdown of the assumptions, as well as the footnotes for the cost table, and made the implementation schedule a little bit more detailed, including the responsibility column and the timeline for the MIPA submission. So I'm going to just scroll to the next page to kind of walk through what those decisions that we need are. Okay. So based on the September meeting, we wanted to just outline, these are action items that we need, decisions, questions, kind of all summarized, that we will need confirmation of from the select board in order to move forward with the MIPA filing for the CWMP project. And in here is a couple more questions that are specific to the filing, and also just reiterating discussions that we had at the September 4th workshop around the timing of that public hearing for the general public of Born, and when you would want to time that, and just confirming that we have the right schedule in mind for the MIPA filing. Before we dig into the details, were there any questions based on the entire package that we sent or anything that you want to dive into first? Or do we want to just start kind of going through this list?
Is there anyone on the board who have any questions?
No, I don't.
Anybody on Zoom, Jean or Melissa, do you have anything? With the screen share, you're going to have to raise your hand with the hand thing, the actual hand thing, or just open your mic and speak when I ask, because.
I'm all set. Thank you. I'll wait.
Okay.
Go through, yeah.
So I have a couple comments based on some of the information that was in the information. When comparing the costs, where the cost comparison, there's no comparison of cost per kilogram of nitrogen removed. And that's kind of an interesting benchmark that I've seen before. Because the cost might seem. Because the cost might seem close to being the same, and a lot of the costs seem to be close to being the same, but if you were actually, I think, to, to do some sort of cost analysis by kilogram of nitrogen removed, it might change what, uh, which seem more expensive or less expensive. Like, where are you getting the most money, the most out of your money for?
Are you saying between the IA systems and sewer?
Yeah.
That, which one removes the most, and that cost, how much it costs to remove sewer nitrogen, as opposed to how much it costs to remove IA system?
Right.
Nitrogen.
Right.
Remove nitrogen with IA.
So I, it's, that's just something, I don't know if you have that, or can easily calculate that, but that's something that I want to see. The other thing is that these raw costs don't, don't address what the, the net cost is to the town, and what the net cost is to the homeowner. How the homeowner is gonna pay for these, like, I was reading the SRF loan program, not that, not the SRS, the, the septic loan program of Barnstable County, and there are not making near zero and two percent loans available for IA systems. IA systems are like four percent or five percent loans. And, um, so what kind of impact is that gonna have on individual people, and especially some of the things we're hearing about the prices of IA systems skyrocketing?
What we're, what we're experiencing in the industry currently to a four-bedroom IA system, new construction is coming in at 130 grand. That's engineering, cost of equipment, you know, the cost of having, you know, pump electricity, which is minimal, but they're coming in at 130 grand, four-bedroom home, on Cape Cod. And part of the, part of that problem, part of the escalation and the high cost is the industry, right? There are actually towns that are not allowing provisional, any of the provisional DEP, uh, um, equipment, you know, like the, the provisional IA systems, sometimes are not requiring it at all. So they're limited to only those that have been approved, and...
So they're general use, and they're, yeah.
That's the cost.
Yeah.
And that's what they're coming in at.
It scares me.
I, I've seen it firsthand, with clients.
It just scares me with, with, with the escalating cost for these alternative septic systems, you know, and the maintenance on top of it, and everything else.
Right.
You know, 'cause you're gonna be paying, you're gonna be paying a maintenance fee just, you know, to operate this, for, for the monitor agreement of these systems.
Quarterly reporting.
Yeah. So it's, um...
Which is required.
So therefore, it's probably gonna be more, it's probably gonna be more efficient, and probably be cheaper if we go into, look at, look at sewers, you know, for these, for these uses, just because I think there'd be lots of an impact in the air around, you're not digging up yards or anything other than just a pipe, instead of someone's backyard and everything else, or front yard. And it's just the cost, you know, 130,000 for a four-bedroom, and it's only gonna go up, it's not gonna go down. And hopefully, if we do go sewer, hopefully, there'll be some state and federal money out there to help, you know, to help subsidize these residents.
Right now, through the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, 25% of the cost is paid through that fund.
Right.
Um, and when you're looking at IA systems, that's really difficult. I mean, Wellfleet's trying to do it, but they can't come up with a plan that does an SRF loan, and you have to have an SRF loan to, to qualify for Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund.
However, any sewer...
They can't do it with general use, right? On-site IA's for septic, right?
You, you can't do an SRF loan, it's not, there's no, there's no SR.
So at this point, um, I have no problem looking at the sewer model, and I know it as a first option, provided that it, there is no direct discharge into the canal, 'cause we took that vote a few years ago at town meeting, even though it was non-binding, that they did not want any direct discharge into the Cape Cod Canal. And I'm gonna, and I know it says here, revisit Buzzards Bay direct discharge in Cape Cod Canal years 11 to 20-plus. I'm like, I mean, if we're gonna go down that road, I want a binding question on the ballot that's gonna say one way or the other, you know, which way the community wants to go, and, and have them have their say, because, I mean, what happens if the system goes down, and all of a sudden, you, you, you're, um, you're dumping direct, you know, raw sewage into the water, now it's all gonna float up on my beach in the backyard, and I, you know, and they say it won't happen, but, you know, you never say never. And, you know, and I guess, you know, and then they say, but I guess, like, I guess, I guess the whole thing is, is, yes, I would, I would look at sewer as a primary option, but I would, but I would like to investigate where we're, you know, where are we gonna be leading, I'll send in the sewer treatment, too, and see if there's any other options, short of going in the canal.
Kate, have you heard any rumblings, and I know this, you know...
She's got her hand up, so she's...
Oh, sorry.
Ask your question, and then she can answer.
About the five-year, uh, that changing to 10? For, uh, the regulations, DEP regulations?
Um, I wanted to just step back, so to answer the question, no, I have not heard that, but that doesn't mean it's not being discussed, so. If I have your blessing, I will reach out to Mass DEP to ask, but I have not heard of any type of timeline extension for the Title V Natural Resource NSA areas that haven't opted into a watershed permit. Again, I, I think that the only community that that might accommodate for a natural resource designation that hasn't opted into a watershed permit is Born. So it'd be, if they do extend it, at this point, Born would be the only community that that would affect, because all other Cape Cod communities with Natural Resource NSA designations have opted into watershed permits.
Okay.
Um, and I wanted to just, I have raised my hand, 'cause I wanted to back up to clarify. I think we jumped to item two C, which is this Phase III revisit Buzzards Bay parentheses, direct discharge, and Cape Cod Canal years 11 to 20-plus. I just wanted to clarify that that was just the land area, um, within the watershed, so it wasn't referring to, uh, a new outfall for wastewater treatment into Buzzards Bay. I was talking about the areas in Born where they're not directly, they're not discharging to a coastal abeyment prior to Buzzards Bay. It's the small portion between, uh, Pecassett River and, uh, Finney's Harbor that technically doesn't go through an abeyment. It just directly discharges groundwater into Buzzards Bay. So it was more addressing, right now, our CWMP takes a townwide approach, but it's prioritizing the nitrogen-impaired watersheds. Years 11 through 20 would revisit to see if there have been any changes, adaptive planning, to include or incorporate any future areas such as,
Buzzards Bay.
Areas that we didn't include in this plan. So I just wanted to make that clarification before we got too far down the road.
Gotcha.
I, I think that, um, that some sort of a wording change.
Yes.
To what, what, that, that was very confusing to, I, I was, I found the same, I was, I, I found it confusing, so, um, I, it, so Phase III is actually revisiting basically the Buzzards Bay watershed and the Cape Cod Canal watersheds, because those aren't impaired, right? So we're not really dealing with them, but we are gonna have to think about them in the future? These are watersheds, right? So it doesn't...
Correct. So for example, Buzzards Bay as a whole does not have a nitrogen TMDL. Coastal abeyments that contribute to Buzzards Bay do. Buzzards Bay only has a pathogen TMDL or bacteria, um, and Cape Cod Canal does not have any impairments listed when we...
All right. So I would just strike the direct discharge.
Right.
And you prob, we probably need to add Cape Cod Bay, because we have direct discharge watersheds to Cape Cod Bay, too, correct?
It's funny the way the groundwater modeling works, like the Sagamore Beach area, they do technically say it goes into the canal, but it wouldn't hurt to just cross that. I'll double-check, but you are correct, like, on the bay side.
Yeah.
So on, while we're on this, question number two, the Phase II, oh, we say, um, Buttermilk Bay, Pecassett River, Pecassett Harbor, years 11 through 20. So although we don't have a TMDL for Pecassett, Red Brook Harbor, that's in the works, and we're probably gonna need a plan before 11 years. So...
I think that's why, I mean, we all understand that it, there's the adaptive management. So when that TMDL is issued, when you actually know what it is, that's when it would make sense to do an amendment to year CWMP.
And, okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
Whenever that clarification would be, would be better, you know, to just get them, it was, it was confusing when I was reading it.
Yeah. So, so that's gonna be revisit just Buzzards Bay, Cape Cod Canal, and...
Cape Cod Bay.
Cape Cod Bay watersheds, or something, yeah. Put the watersheds in there, so people understand that. Um, actually, I think the number two, um, it's three phases of CWMP watershed implementation. So it's clear that we're talking about the watersheds for all those things. That might be assumed to be known, but it's, I always like the word in there. When it, when it, all right, so...
Okay.
Are we, let's, 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 do we want to not vote anything yet, but that, does that...
Right, we haven't really gone through.
So question number two, A, B, and C, is that, do we want to discuss that anymore? Is that the, that kind of, we're gonna go back and vote it at the end, 'cause I want some specific votes, but... Yeah, we're good with that. Everyone good with that phasing? Any comments?
So we're not identifying specifically what's happening in the Finney's Harbor, McGansus, and Squitique Harbor. We're just identifying in this that we're going to address it during those years with this...
Yeah, and I don't know if, is that shown anywhere later in the document?
As part of this reporting, correct?
Is it shown anywhere in the document?
Essentially, what we have is the phase, the way that the timeline schedule is done is based on three, these three phases, and we only show Phases I and II, because Phase III isn't scheduled for any implementation. So for Phase I, it does include investigating sewer in for Finney's Harbor. For McGansus and Squitique, it shows phased implementation of the general-use IA systems. And for Phase II, at the moment, it shows adding general-use IA systems across Buttermilk Bay, Pecassett River, and Pecassett Harbor, as well as the EIA pilot targeted in Buttermilk Bay.
And we have to do both, to reach the TMDLs, right, to, for reducing?
Well, to reach the, there is no TMDL.
I mean, to, to, to reach your target of 25%. Right, right.
Correct. So the solutions in the implementation schedule do have an action associated with them, kind of to that point, but what it is saying is, you know, do we agree with the way that these are laid out for timelines, understanding that your MIPA submission is going to focus on years one through 11, and that as you adaptively manage your plan, you can revisit the details, the actual project decisions for Phase II, as well as for Phase I, the whole point is you don't need to, the goal is to start with the Phase I, II watershed, like those II watersheds, Finney's Harbor, McGansus, and Squitique, and that you will update through a notice of project change if you need to make any changes to your Phase II watershed implementation plans. Is that kind of clarified?
Kate, is, is the MIPA submission years one through 11, or years one through five?
The immediate projects that the MIPA is, are focusing on is the immediate action items that will take place first for Finney's Harbor and McGansus and Squitique. We currently have that implementation schedule over a 10-year period. With the exception of McGansus and Squitique, I take it back, that one is five years to comply with Title V. Nitrogen-sensitive area, natural resource areas. So that implementation is condensed to maintain compliance with Title V, but understanding that Title V compliance will rely on individual homeowner participation, right? I'm gonna step back to item one, if that's all right. We'll go in order.
Sure.
So in order to file with advanced notice or pre-notification to environmental justice communities, the minimum posting for the expanded environmental notification form, EENF, would be on or before January 15th, as the EJ community notification requires 45-day pre-notification. So the revised timeline that I put forth is as follows. The question I have for the Select Board is if you agree. So on or before December 1st, there will be a pre-notification to the environmental justice notification list. This will not include the full deliverable, because that will be, when I say deliverable, I mean the entire ENF packet does not get distributed. It's a, uh, notification heads-up that there will be a filing to be filed on or before, um, to be filed on January 15th to the environmental, uh, monitor. So...
Can I, can I ask a question about that environmental monitor thing? Let's, can we look at that page?
Yeah.
Schedule? Are you talking about the schedule?
Yeah, page three of 76.
Yep.
So we were...
Bear with me, I'm gonna have to see. I'm just scrolling to the bottom, but I wanted to make sure I could actually, um, still see the headings.
That's a good idea. We have extra mics, too, so if anybody else wants a mic, feel free to take a mic. Yeah. All right, so first of all, what's an ENF decision and what's an EIR comment?
So for the Step I, so typically, an expand, an environmental notification form is the way that you notify MIPA of the thresholds for review, that you will be asking them to perform a project review for. MIPA will give you a decision at that time to say you need to file an environmental impact report, an EIR. The reason why they have the two different deadlines is because if you're filing an, an EIR... The reason why they have the two different deadlines is because if you're filing an, an ENF only, they get back to you within the two-week timeframe. If you have an environmental impact review, they ask for one extra week of time. Um, so the difference between those two is you can file on the environmental monitor, and this is hypothetical, um, for a typical project, I'll get into our specifics. For a project to be published in the environmental monitor, you have to figure out how many weeks do you, does MIPA need for review? The option's either two weeks for ENF, three weeks for EIR. We however are planning to file, and we'll walk through exactly what boxes I have checked, the expanded environmental notification form, so it's the extra E, ENF, which means we're asking MIPA to review not just a simple ENF. We want them to review more information because at this point, we've completed multiple steps through the CWMP process. And we are asking them to review a special project review because some of our alternatives, the general use IA systems that we are proposing, are outside of the typical MIPA review thresholds. But we are going to be taking nitrogen removal credit for them as a community. So we need to ask for their additional time to review that special piece. So when we're looking at these headings, I would expect you to see the EIR comment and EIR decision timeframe because both the E, ENF, and our special project review will likely require MIPA to take that extra week. So even though our deliverable that we are giving to them, it's not an EIR by title, it does have a couple of extra items, I'd say, that are a little different than standard ENF. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I noticed on the timeline that we're no longer bringing this CWMP to the annual town meeting. Based on this timeline, we're not bringing it until this fall town meeting.
Correct. That was, and I can skip ahead to the, um, page, bear with me. I'm gonna zoom in on this, I'm just focusing on this orange section, also known as the MIPA review process items. So I did update this to include the num- the number in the box is the date of that month that these need to be completed by. So assuming that we are following the last posted environmental monitor schedule, so for twenty-twenty-four, the one we are aiming for is the first environmental monitor notice in twenty-twenty-five. The rest of the MIPA twenty-twenty-five schedule, um, has not been posted that I'm aware of. So I'll double check the website again to see if they've posted it. Last time I checked, they haven't published the monitor dates through the end of twenty-twenty-five yet. Um, so this is assuming the timeline that was put forth on that environmental monitor date of January twenty-fourth, when the clock starts for MIPA review, um, which requires being able to advertise and submit forms on or before January fifteenth. Based on what is likely to happen as part of the MIPA review process, again, you will likely need that additional week of MIPA review time because we have the expanded environmental notification form and the special project review that I did leave buffer time in the schedule to be able to accommodate those response times. So there's a chance we might have only a two-week comment period, but ultimately, I built the schedule in to include worst case, needing that extra MIPA week for responses. So ultimately, that puts us at April of twenty-twenty-five, when we would receive that full MIPA review and a MIPA certificate. That would give you a very tight window, in my personal opinion, so that's why we have it for discussion today. Very tight window to turn around in time for a meeting, um, town, spring town meeting warrant deadline. If you're meeting in May, there's a chance you may not be able to finalize your MIPA certificate to get in for the warrant for that spring town meeting.
Well, the, the, the meeting is the first Monday in May, and the warrant closes by the end of March. I mean, and the handback, the handbook has to be, handbook has to be printed by the second.
Two, fourteen days or something?
No, more, twenty, like, twenty, twenty days before. So we need it basically three weeks before the first week in May, so. Um, what about the, um, review and recommend final plan has now got four months in it? Is, is that the best? Is that the best time to use those four months? And the, the reason, I'm, I'm trying to make a decision here because we, we could say, oh, we're, we're just gonna file this, and we could get it into the most fastest timeline for, for doing it. We could say, okay, we're gonna make these decisions, we're gonna do it, we're gonna file, we're gonna do it. We could do that and move the select board review workshop final draft submittal, we could move that from, or that we could move the real, uh, let's see, finalize ENF submittal and sign November fifteenth. I mean, I guess that's about as close as you could go, right? I mean, we can't, we've lost the period of time. I mean, I thought we still, based on our discussion last time, I thought we could have done an earlier filing and still made that annual town meeting. But if we can't make the annual town meeting, the question is.
I still think we should be on track with the schedule. We can't make annual town meeting, as much as I'd like to, if we can't, then.
I'd take more room in the front end than at the back end. I'd, I'd kind of split that two months and put it like, before we file, take like two months to really make sure that, 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 that we're comfortable. I mean, I've, this is what, this is the comments that I've been hearing. I heard from, at the last workshop meeting, John Duggan said, doing this IA thing is a big mistake. And he's the representative of the planning board. In Pecassett Village Association meeting that I went to where Buzzards Bay Coalition was there talking about how they were gonna do the Pecassett Harbor Plan, the comments and questions that I received are things like, why are you doing this IA system thing and not doing sewer ring? What, what is your plan, why, are you comfortable with having, um, a satellite wastewater treatment plant versus a major wastewater treatment plant handling your wastewater? Is it gonna be most effective? I mean, we've got a wastewater treatment plant that, when we originally talked about the wastewater treatment plant in Buzzards Bay, it was gonna be a low-cost, ten-year plan to, to supplement us until we expanded the Wareham Plant and had a centralized sewer system. Um, I, um, we never really looked at, can we tap into Joint Base Cape Cod?
Can we tap into?
I mean, they have three hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. Now, I don't know with what they're doing with mass development, if a lot of that's gonna be taken up. But is there, I mean, are we, I'm really, the numbers, I don't like the numbers that are in this.
And, I don't, I don't either.
I don't like the difference between the IA and the sewer in terms of what it's gonna cost. And I don't think, I think it's gonna cost way more for IA, I think it's less, less.
It already is showing it's costing.
Less for the sewer.
But more, and it's showing less.
It's less effective, it seemed like a good idea at the time. Like, oh, we can get these large cross-nitro systems, but is that happening?
And then, you know, the other, the other piece of that too, with, there's so much unpredictability, I think, with a lot of these IA systems because some of them are still provision, provisional. Um, they're doing some, you know, adaptive things. Sometimes, you know, you have to add a tank, or you, like, if your system fails, now you're replacing your old tank, new tank, uh, uh, or, you know, you're, you're adding, everybody's trying to wait to see if they come up with something to just add that miraculously going to solve all the problems. But there isn't even no guarantee that these IA systems, how long they last, and how, how much nitrogen they actually remove. I mean, they all have to be engineered. Uh, there, it, it's, there's so much unpredictability with these IA systems, they really are. And I, it, it's a hu- I just think it's a huge gamble, not to mention the costs, not to mention, you know, um, the decisions that we're making as a community for a homeowner. It's a lot. It's a lot. And these regulations that, you know, I mean.
So when we first started this process, general use IA systems were not, were not acceptable as your traditional alternative. And we were told, we are going to be looking at sewer ring as the, as an alternative, that we were gonna totally, like, we were gonna have a plan for sewer ring. And we've sort of said, oh, yeah, we could do a satellite system in, in McGansett, or, yeah, we could tap into the, the Bourne wastewater treatment plant, but we haven't even talked to the schools about that, so.
Right.
I don't think we can submit a plan that says we're gonna use the Bourne Schools wastewater treatment plant without having talked to the Bourne Schools about it.
Right.
And I'm just, I, um, when I look at these numbers and I'm a numbers person, then it, the, the, the risk of going with an IA system plan and the risk to the taxpayers and the residents and.
It's a lot.
It's, it's a lot, and if we're not going until next fall anyway, I, I, I don't know what to do. I, I feel that this has been, uh, obviously, a slowly developing plan. Um, the, the alternative that we talked about, our alternatives analysis was to use IA systems. And then that became the main thing, and I always thought that D, D, and now DEP says, yeah, you can do that, but.
Well, yeah, part of the problem is they've just, DEP is just like, it's too much, all at once. I mean, they did it with the whole, the HERS rating now, and they just changed it. So everybody in the last year, since they implemented the new, you know, rate, we had to get a HERS raider to tell you types of insulation windows, et cetera. Now manufacturers are screaming cuz they can't manufacture a window that meets the new regulations, so they changed them.
Yeah, I, I think this, the new, the.
They changed them, you know, it's like, uh, uh,
The regulation.
That's my fear, now they're gonna change. And not to mention, how is it physically possible to in five years meet Title V regs? It's, there's not enough manufacturing, there's not engineering, installation. It's just not physically possible. We're, we're, I can't foresee us, or anyone, in five years meeting this general use IA in McGansett's critique harbor.
I think, I think what this, what we're seeing, this is like an unfunded mandate, you know, there's nothing, you know, in that, in that sense, cuz it's not gonna be realistic that we're gonna have the staff or the, you know, we're not gonna be able to accomplish what they want, I just think it's too aggressive. And hopefully, the state and their wisdom will back a little bit as time, you know, because if not, then they're putting a lot of stress um, on, on, on the tradesmen, you know, and the respected fields that have to get these, this work done, and then the municipalities that have to get these inspections done and everything else.
Yeah, and then sure, you know, we're taking on, you know, operationally, what's impact that's going to have.
Well, we're already having people, like, have you filed an NOI and why haven't you?
Yeah.
Right, right. Cuz it does impact, it impacts the industry. I, I, I'm not gonna be inappropriate, but it's a, show.
Oh, it is, definitely.
You know, I mean, people wanna do things with their home, but they're.
Yeah.
They, it's all over the place, what do you tell them? And you tell them, no, you gotta put in this, you're in the TMDL zone, you gotta put in, you gotta upgrade your system that's, you know, seven years old for a two-bedroom, it was put in for a three-bedroom, but you, you know, there's two bedrooms, so you have room to add on, but you're in the TMDL, you've gotta, you've gotta upgrade your, to your IA system.
So I, so I have been, I have been for a long time saying, no, we don't need to file a watershed permit because we're doing IA systems, but I'm not convinced we're gonna do IA systems, that it makes financial sense to do IA systems. And if we're gonna investigate sewer as our main alternative, then we need to file watershed permits and protect the people, the NOIs.
If we file watershed permits, I mean, are we, are we putting more stress on the staff to implement this?
What's the downside of having twenty watershed permits?
That's what I'm trying to get to.
What's the downside?
Um, I would like to ask the town administrator that.
So, um, your plan, your CWMP has to be internally consistent. And right now, all the work you've done to this point at the end of phase two has said your primary approach is IA systems. That is the plan that you developed. I don't really see a way forward to now at the, at the end.
Switch.
Change that, um, without going back and redoing your plan. You got to that point, following the process, to just say, okay, we did phase one, we did phase two, but we don't like the result, and we're gonna just switch it at the end, it, I'm struggling with that. To have a plan that, that goes to town meeting, it should, it, and that it's approved, and that's laying out the, the path forward for the town, your plan shouldn't be taking you in one direction and then switching at the end. Do you, frankly, if you don't like this plan, I am, I almost have to say that you need to start over.
Well, I'm not sure that we need to start over because I think that we did the alternatives analysis and came up with IA systems as, as an alternative, not as the primary thing. All the time being told that we were gonna be developing a plan for sewer ring. And when it changed that we were gonna be not developing a plan for sewer ring was when all of a sudden, like, late in the process, DEP said, oh, you don't need to do a sewer ring plan. So we were told we were gonna have a sewer ring plan, and then we were gonna have IA's, and then we were gonna be able to compare the costs of those two plans. And what we really got was only an IA plan, and then saying, well, like, what's the cost of sewer ring? So I have financial costs that weren't discussed as part of phase one, weren't discussed as far to phase two. And frankly, financing is a big part of the cost in the analysis. And maybe we do have to start over, but not phase one and phase two, maybe we have to go back and redo phase three.
I don't think, I don't think your phase two, I don't think your phase two sets the foundation for what you're trying to do.
Can we ask?
Yes, yeah, yeah, raise your hand, yeah, you.
Can we ask Kate what she thinks of this discussion?
Sure.
Just grab the mic off the table.
Yep.
I didn't just raise them, I just lowered my hand.
I can't real, I'd say.
When I first said that, it was.
Just talk.
I heard you telepathically. Yeah, so what I'm hearing is I, I agree with what you just walked through, Marley. I think that unfortunately, the way that we had gone through our alternatives analysis, when it came to the initial. the initial risk threshold for selecting alternatives, what we are seeing in the marketplace in October twenty twenty-four is different than what we were seeing in the marketplace when we did our alter- our, our alternatives analysis two years ago. I think, just to acknowledge that the market has shifted in a huge way.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I wanna acknowledge that I absolutely am hearing your concern about what that shift in the market for general use IA systems, what that impact will have directly on the individual homeowners that you would be asking to comply with, the plan as we had reviewed it. If I may just give a reminder of of where the alternatives analysis process was, was to absolutely come up with what options you wanted to provide to the community as tools in your toolkit, with the understanding that sewer is absolutely always a fallback plan. When we were walking through that process with the Wastewater Advisory Committee, and we developed the initial technology review, we as your engineers helped to filter that down to a list from one hundred down to around twenty-five. We went through that informed evaluation to try to figure out what technologies you would be willing to look at based on all those different uh, evaluation parameters, and some of them included, uh, items such as risk of implementation, uh, the ability to get funding for a particular device or not, and how effective it would be at nitrogen removal. So from that alternatives analysis, you took a, you know, you and the Wastewater Advisory Committee group were really able to look at a wide range of alternatives. So I don't want you to lose sight of all of the work that you've put into this point to get to the IA systems as a tool for your toolkit, and I wanna give you the credit that you could not have predicted what the, um, cost inflation for the individual units would be based on the now regional policy that you are working unfortunately under, and the timeline associated with that. So I just wanna set that stage that the work you've done to date has been work under this brand-new policy landscape. While you were going through the alternatives analysis, and when we finished the alternatives analysis, that was when we took that deliberate pause to have the regulations be finalized for what the Title V change would be. And yeah, the market has since shifted. So I wanna just, you have done a lot of work that I want to make sure that you and the Wastewater Advisory Committee are taking credit for. And that being said, for where do we go from here, and how do you feel comfortable with making decisions or committing to one path forward, I wanna also remind you that you also don't know what might change in that price impact for the next five years, and that perhaps you just start smaller and start with one step at a time. So if we're feeling at this point, there's some fear to committing for watershed-wide items, maybe it's you're looking at pilot communities, maybe you're looking at uh, smaller areas where you might do that, and putting an option on the table for developing that sewer satellite system, which we did also update and include for McGansett, just to kind of help keep it intentional and short-term focused. So for Finney's Harbor, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but that is included in your timeline for Phase One. For Finney's Harbor. For McGansett's critique, yes, as of right now, based on our more recent, I'll say the last six months conversations, IA's were tr- were selected as the approach to take simply because there wasn't a, an accessible existing satellite facility for you to send centralized wastewater to. That doesn't mean that you can't, at the same time as starting this plan, dig into that, look into the parcels that we had recommended for possibly acquiring them, possibly seeking an exemption under, uh, open space requirements to be able to use that for wastewater treatment, certain opportunities. Even if you wanted to turn around tomorrow and build a wastewater plant, it would not happen overnight. You would still need to make the plan for that. And I wanna make sure, you know, I'm saying this as your engineer, this is your plan, and I don't wanna make you feel forced into one decision um, or another right here at this meeting, but for the, for the perspective I have for you, I want you to know that on the whole, you are still on the right path, and that putting forth, the CWMP is saying, we wanna try this, we absolutely are concerned about what the market might be for homeowners and that burden. Why don't we start with an and plan, so that you can continue to develop what that satellite treatment facility would look like, while you get the first round of folks that are wanting to invest in an onsite system, to get them started with that, maybe it's public education, while you're continuing to develop what that satellite facility plan might be. I don't, I wanna just caution you to throwing the brakes on, because you've put on, you've put in so much planning effort and research as a community to date, that I, I absolutely wanna say there's still a path forward where you can commit to one to two options and take actionable steps towards those options. Does that kind of make sense? That's, that's my perspective on this.
Then what does that look like when we present to town meeting? That's what we're presenting?
Well. Um, can, can, can someone from EP tell me if there was ever any discussion with Joint Base Cape Cod as to whether or not there was wastewater, regional wastewater treatment available for Bourne to participate in? There was a report where we were part of that discussion. I don't know if during this CWMP there was anything discussed, because in the presentation that EP made to the Board of Sewer Commissioners, they did state that they were gonna be investigating a potential regional solution at Joint Base Cape Cod. So did that happen?
Absolutely. We, both Helen and myself and town administrations, um, predating Marlene's involvement, although we absolutely brought up to speed all of the paperwork, essentially, we had been in conversations with Converge, which is the company that had taken over the Joint Base Cape Cod wastewater facility, and they ultimately contracted with ACIS, the contract operator for the Joint Base Cape Cod facility. And we had had workshops with them during the needs assessment and early phases of the alternatives analysis. The reporting at the time was restricted, participation was restricted based on a couple of factors that were still in, at the time, discussion by the state and Converge slash ACIS, like the organization running the facility. Uh, there were concerns about eligibility for communities seeking costs through the State Revolving Fund program to be able to convey flow to Joint Base Cape Cod. There were conversations around what flow capacity is available, and ultimately, there were concerns around the regulatory environment for the wastewater treatment and disposal at Joint Base Cape Cod due to emerging contaminants such as PFAS. Um, so there were a few different options, or a few different larger considerations or larger concerns um, that we did bring up through the Wastewater Advisory Committee, um, alternatives analysis process. Um, and I believe those were captured in our alternatives analysis, but I don't have that document open, so I'll do that.
So, actually, I.
My screen to find.
I do have it open, Kate, and.
Oh, beautiful.
And, um, four point one point one three is regional sewer-ing for McGansett Squatique, which was ruled out. Um, and then four point two point one point three was regional sewer-ing for, um, Finney's Harbor. So the, there was discussion in the Phase Two document of the regional sewer-ing options.
Can you tell me where that discussion is so I can review it?
Yeah.
Because I don't know what the detail was for that. I don't know what detail there was for that, for eliminating that, and why we eliminated it.
Sure, so, uh, yeah, so the board voted, so the board received Phase Two, um, and I'm happy to recirculate this. So December seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Seven.
Can you please resend that?
I'll recirculate this, and this was the final version of the Phase Two, which did, which, at the time, the board did vote, and then we moved into Phase Three.
Did that have explanations of why it was, these things were eliminated? Of, of the reasons? And one of the reasons I say that is concerns about the eligibility for SRF. And SRF has been a little bit more, um, amenable to uh, allowing that participation, which was really questioned at that time. But since that time, SRF has agreed to allow Bourne to get SRF credit for the wastewater treatment plant improvements, the six million dollars that we're paying for the Wareham facility. And so we are gonna get our Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund money for that. And so the eligibility for SRF and the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund may have been resolved in the recent process. And I don't know, because I think Sandwich actually stopped going, stopped thinking about using Joint Base Cape Cod, which they were originally doing, and some of these things were the things that bothered them.
So, Sandwich has not left the discussion. We're, there's, there are still ongoing discussions, but there is not, there's not capacity, and they are having trouble with the PFAS and their permit.
So there's, if, if there's not.
Not capacity.
I think that twenty nineteen report said that they had, they were using forty percent of three hundred sixty thousand gallons per day. So if there is not capacity because of the PFAS problem, that's different than there's not capacity because of.
Well, there's some capacity, but there's not enough capacity for, that Sandwich needs more capacity.
Okay.
It, there would have to be an expansion.
Okay. All right. So December seventh, twenty twenty-two, four point one point one three and four point two point one three has explanations about why we didn't pursue those regional options.
I've recirculated the document for everyone.
All right, thank you.
I raised my hand. Can I jump in? Cool. So the other item here was, I'm, I'm gonna, you can jump into the the actual report. I'm just gonna read directly that there was a, an update, right? Pierce is in the process of updating that twenty nineteen Joint Base Cape Cod Regional Flow Summary to further examine the available flow capacity and project phasing under the new ownership of the facility. Um, so once ACIS had taken operation of the facility, they were working with another consultant to update for the region that twenty nineteen study. Um, I have in the report here that the study was expected to be completed in late twenty twenty-three. Um, so I'm curious, Marlene, if you had received any updated copies since, or I can check to see if the final results from that, right, Pierce, study had been done.
You should check with them. I can't remember what I received at the end of twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, I will follow up to see what that results have, just so that the select board, that you can have that study in hand. But the closing was, the conventional general use IA onsite system alternative meets the TMDL removal goal for Finney's Harbor watershed. But if adaptive management reveals additional sewer-ing is needed, then the Joint Base Cape Cod regional option can be considered for future usage. This alternative would require the planning, design, and construction of a collection system from Finney's Harbor to a pump station and force main to convey the sewage to the regional facility. So essentially, at the time we were doing our alternatives analysis, Joint Base Cape Cod had not yet updated nor completed their study to understand what they could allow for a community contribution such as Bourne to the facility. So it absolutely has been something that, again, based on the results of that updated study we can share, and you absolutely can revisit. And I wanna stress that revisiting that plan is absolutely, this falls under the category of that adaptive management planning. So it's a little tricky, because I think we're having to adaptively manage while still trying to get a plan into NEPA, but I just wanna tell you that that it falls under that umbrella. You are under that umbrella still. Um, so that option was evaluated. I'd say, if we needed to summarize why it wasn't drawn out or designed in detail, is because there were still a lot of unknowns that we couldn't take into account from the Joint Base Cape Cod planning side. At the time, we were doing the alternatives analysis through twenty twenty-two. They couldn't necessarily commit to, sign on to, guarantee any level of flow or treatment to Bourne, which is potentially what you would have needed to be able to commit to that alternative, if that makes sense. That being said, you are absolutely welcome to revisit it. It's something that you can do as part of conversations with Bourne Public Schools, and as an alternative for meeting a sewer requirement for Finney's Harbor. It was not recommended for McGansett Squatique just based on distance. Um, from the watershed to Joint Base Cape Cod through conveyance, where you put a pump station, where you put a force main. That was why Finney's Harbor was considered a future adaptive management option, but not for McGansett Squatique.
Can we talk about, uh, page five of seventy-six?
This guy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is, um, this is what's really kind of concerning me. We have McGansett Squatique Harbor, general use IA, two hundred eighty-five parcels, five hundred and seventy nitrogen removed, average daily flow ninety-four thousand. Um, total capital cost, twelve million oh nine two, and that's based on, what, like, what did we say, forty-two thousand a system?
But remember, these, remember, these numbers are, you know, minus fifty percent to plus a hundred percent.
Right, and we're, right now, we're, we're kind of going to the plus.
Hundred and.
Hundred fifty percent. Which, well, but I'm not fit, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
So we're, we're comparing twelve million to thirteen point eight million. And then for, for, for a satellite sewer system, which has fewer parcels, more nitrogen removal, and it has a higher, uh, O and M cost, but if thirteen point eight million, we, if we can get twenty-five percent of that cost and do an SRF loan. I mean, I don't have a spreadsheet. I, I, I like to kind of futz with numbers, so not having the spreadsheet is. futz with numbers, so not having the spreadsheet is difficult, but thirteen. Eight-five-three.
So it's three million four hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty. That's twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
It's three point four.
Which, which means that, 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 that's a ten million dollar cost instead of a thirteen million dollar cost.
Yeah.
Right? And.
So, yeah.
But it's less parcels, but it's more nitrogen removed. So. The operations and maintenance cost is, I guess, based on what our wastewater treatment plant is costing us. So.
But I think the margins are greater.
And, and so this, this becomes, so the, the question becomes, is, if, if. And I mean, I'm not sure we have a place where we can do a centralized sewer system on the south side and have wastewater dispersed. There's been question about, like, the, say, we took the county land and, you know, there is a wastewater treatment plant there, but what, you know, that watershed goes to someplace that was deemed, I think, not to be a great place for it to go. I think we had some discussion about that during the alternatives analysis, as to whether that was a suitable place to have some sort of discharge. I mean. So when you look at Finney's Harbor, the general use IA systems for one thousand one hundred thirty-five, the, the capital cost is forty-eight million. The operational cost is two point seven million. And the Finney's Harbor sewer at the wastewater treatment plant has a capital cost of thirty-seven point four million, or thirty-seven point five, of which we could get.
You get your.
Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And the O and M cost is less. So. I think now, our plan right now that we're doing for this MIPA is showing for Finney's Harbor that that's the sewer-ing is our primary alternative, right?
Yes.
So we're showing in this plan that we're proposing sewer-ing is the primary alternative. And we will be filing an NOI, right? Because sewer-ing is our primary alternative for Finney's Harbor.
I would recommend you file an NOI when you have information back from DEP that you can expand and discharge.
Well. I'm not sure I agree with that.
That's okay.
Because if we don't file an NOI, then all the people that are in the Finney's Harbor watershed get, like, they have, they're, they're under the gun here, instead of being like, oh, I don't, I don't know what happens. So if you're new construction.
Well, yeah.
What happens if you're new construction in Finney's Harbor, we file an NOI, you still have to put in a septic system that's going to cost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right?
No, you don't.
No?
You just said if you're new construction and you have filed an NOI.
Yeah. So what are they gonna do with standard? They, they just do a regular Title V?
So if your existing Title V doesn't fail, they're grandfathered, right?
You're, you said new construction, though.
Yeah. So. So that's a, it's a. So hang on, hang on a second. I really do want, I really do want to caution the board not to try to say that any particular thing is going to happen. This is, this is a very conceptual plan. And I, and I do think it is misleading to say that anything is set in stone. Or that anything is guaranteed. As far as the NOI and the watershed permit goes, my, my concern to, for the town of BORN is that the town of BORN will be assuming all of the risk for compliance when you have not been given the appropriate tools from the state in order to comply. Now, I'm not arguing at all that this is something that should fall one hundred percent on the homeowners. I'm not saying that. But I, but I am saying it should not fall one hundred percent on the town of BORN. There are too many questions, and it's too, there are too many unknowns. If you, and remember, this is a highest level conceptual plan. You may go down the engine, you may do your loading studies, you may do your engineering studies, you may put this plan together, and you may find that you can't, for whatever reason, you can't get a discharge permit and a treatment permit at that plant. And you have to start over. That is the whole point of the CWMP. It is, it is a path that you're saying, we're going to try this first. That's what a CWMP does. You're not, you're not promising anything. The point is, you ha, you should get a CWMP in place so you've got the vote of town meeting behind you. So it makes sense to commit the millions of dollars it's going to take to do these engineering studies. So if you lay out your plan and say, our, our goal here, Plan A is to expand the treatment plant at the middle school, that's Plan A. That means you are spending years and spending millions of dollars in studies to get those permits. If you don't have those permits in hand, I would not commit to a watershed permit before you know that you've got a path, that you know with certainty. Because you can't say with certainty right now that you're going to get a, a treatment and discharge permit for that. You haven't done any of the loading studies.
When in the timeline would we have that assurance?
In the first five years of your CWMP. So if you look at, if you, if you look at those spreadsheets that Kate has sent out in the past, the first five years are essentially, you're going through, you're going through the analysis to see if you can do the treatment and discharge at, at the middle school.
And in the meantime, all the people that live in that watershed are under the requirement to update their Title V systems within five years.
And anyone who actually does that. First of all. First of all, we all know DEP is the enforcement agent. So anyone who goes ahead and does that and upgrades their system, the town can carve them out of the mandatory TAP. And the, if you do go through and put your main down the street, you leave a stub for future. And those, those people who have upgraded based on Title V are exempt from the betterment until such time that they need to tie in.
I have a chair.
Yes. Keith.
So, it's a sign? I guess it is. So I, I a hundred percent agree with what Marlene just said. And I, I think, you know, on the page that has the decisions required, number two, does the select board agree with three phases? Well, these three phases have a total of twenty years to complete.
Yep.
So if we get the CWMP approved, and then in two years we have to change something, that's possible, right? It can be changed as it goes along. So you have a starting point of having it approved, and then you work within the timelines to answer all the questions that you've been proposing. I don't think you have to answer those questions before you get the CWMP. You answer it within it. That, that's, again, I'm a pretty simple clown, so, you know, I don't know if I'm right, or if it just. Marlene explained it so clearly, even I understood.
Except for Kurt, Keith, I've been in about multiple meetings where you have stated pretty emphatically that we should be getting watershed permits right now.
Okay.
You still believe that, or have you changed your mind?
Yeah, I still believe it.
Well, that's, what she said is, we're not going to get any watershed permits for five years until we know what our plan is.
Okay, so what's wrong with that? So in five years, we get watershed permits. I'm not saying we have to get them today.
Okay.
I just think we need them to protect people from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that Anne Marie just said. You know, I, again, maybe I don't understand this clearly, but I, the fact that this is an adaptive plan and we can change it means let's get started, or we'll never get it done.
Bob.
Hi, this is Bob Delmire. Just for the record, again, I'm not a member of the committee, but with regard to the McGansett Squatique watershed, I think a very good go-by, or example, would be to keep close track on what Falmouth is doing for their half of the same watershed. They've got, I think, I just looked it up, they have three hundred fifteen parcels that they've designated for IA. I don't know if that, if they formally have applied for a watershed permit for that, but it sounds like they're moving in that direction. My guess is if the whole of McGansett were turned over to the state, the state may start a process within, quote, the five-year window, but they're not going to go much faster than what Falmouth is actually doing for that part of the watershed. And if it looks like their watershed permit is working, they have a responsible management entity that actually can manage it, be it, you know, in the town or some external body like the county. That would be something that potentially BORN should just latch on to, and the state would not disagree with that, I don't think.
So I believe that they did file for McGansett for a watershed permit. And you're saying that their plan is for three hundred fifty IA, three hundred fifteen IA systems in McGansett?
I'll, I'll look it up. I'll, I'll find this document and forward it to you, but I just looked it up. It looked like three hundred fifteen for their half, and I believe ours is two eighty-five, something like that, parcels.
I believe Falmouth has filed an NOI. I don't think they're finished with their permit yet.
Well, that's what, I mean, filed an NOI is what I meant. Like, they filed to get a watershed permit.
Let me find this, and I will, I'll forward it to everybody if I can.
So I'm curious as to why they filed a, a water, an NOI for a watershed permit for McGansett if they're planning to do IA systems.
My understanding is they're planning to sewer around the McGansett nursing home.
Does that make sense?
That was what I heard. That's what I, that's the last I heard that their plan was.
Okay.
I, I don't have a date on this document, but I'll, I can't find it. It was June twenty twenty-four, so I'll send it off to you.
Okay. So.
So getting back.
Yeah.
Currently, soaring primarily around Finney's Harbor.
So the other thing is, there's nothing in this that gives us any kind of, so it's interesting, on the next page, when it looks at costs. When it looks at costs. For the sewer-ing, the costs are per mile, and operation and maintenance are cost per mile. It's difficult to determine how the betterments get assigned, or the betterments get assigned based on the total capital cost and of, of creating the plant and doing the the mileage, the miles for the sewer line. I mean, how, how much? I'm looking for a comparison of, the betterment cost for the people who are getting sewered is twenty thousand dollars, and the cost for the IA system is forty-two to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I need a cost per.
I, I would be very careful saying a betterment cost for sewer is going to be twenty thousand dollars. That. Or even trying to. Or even trying to predict that is. That is, there's, the state law has a, a very intense process that, that the select board at the time needs to go through when you have actual engineered plans and actual costs. You, we, it, it would be. You, you need to, it's, betterments are done by unit when you have real costs. I would caution you strongly to say, not to say that a betterment for sewer is going to be twenty thousand dollars.
So we can't give any prediction about what the possible betterments will be for?
No.
We don't know what the cost is going to be until that time.
Right. But we will say that the septic loan program in Barnstable County gives septic loans to homeowners for the betterment costs of a connecting to sewer at zero or two percent interest rate.
At least right now.
Yes.
At least right now.
Their plan right now is to do that. So. I don't know.
But by the time a betterment actually is voted and is recorded, all of that could change. That's what, that's what's so important with the CWMP is, this is very tentative. There is zero certainty here.
So it's a working doc, it's a working document no matter what subject to change.
Living document.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it is a roadmap at the highest level. It, it, it's not even a working, it's not even a working document for any real plan. I mean, for any real project. It's a, it's an overarching plan. But these are, but these project by project details are enormous efforts in and of themselves.
Keith, I have a question for Pecassett River. They're not, is Buzzards Bay Coalition not doing Pecassett River for their thing? Not yet. So they're, they're doing the Red Brook Harbor, Pecassett Harbor, that's pending. Okay. So, all right. Well. I feel that right now. Does somebody have a hand up? I can't.
No, you can't see if they do.
Yeah, we can't see the hands because it's, we're screen sharing. So. Where in this document is the actual one to plan, what, years one to five? Is it any, any place besides this page eight overall action, uh, action plan?
You mean page seven?
Seven, yeah, yeah.
This, this page is the primary written form of this implementation plan for year review. Yes. This schedule shows years one through, I did bring it out to year seven to twenty thirty-one, assuming that year one starts in twenty twenty-five.
I, is there anything?
So there's a little bit more than five years.
Is there anything on here for McGansett Squatique?
The only item that would apply to McGansett Squatique based on the alternative of proceeding with general use IA is under assessment and preliminary design phase, starting in year two. The Board of Health Policy Review and new IA regulations begin record review slash develop software needs for on-site system tracking for the town from January twenty twenty-six through July, June of twenty twenty-six. And to propose FY twenty-six budget additions for Health Department, assuming that based on reviewing of how documents are being recorded, how you are tracking on-site system compliance, you would likely need to either add staff, add software, or add both to your current operations plan. And ultimately, it would be policy that you would set town line, but would directly affect implementation in McGansett Squatique Harbor for the general use IA applications.
So I had a question about that timeline as being April, May, and June of twenty twenty-six. If we're working on the FY twenty-six budget, is that going to be moved forward?
I would have, I would, I would not recommend moving that forward. I would not recommend put, I would not make a budget recommendation until I have a voted CWMP in hand from town meeting.
All right. So that's really not an FY twenty-six budget addition. It's really an FY twenty-seven budget addition.
I would, if the CWMP is voted in fall of F, if.
Fall of twenty twenty.
Fall of calendar year twenty twenty-five. If the CWMP goes there, then I would work over the following winter.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six with Caitlin, figure out what the Board of Health needs. And then either come to, uh, possibly come to a special or depending on what the actual, remember, this is not an actual real schedule. So depending on what the, what the Board of Health needs to do their regulations and to staff, we would, we come to a special or schedule it for the next operating, um, annual.
All right, it just seems to me that from what you're describing, it would be more like January to June of twenty twenty, January to Ju, June of twenty twenty-six, not May. I mean, if you're gonna have any discussions starting in the winter, but if you, it's fine. And, I, I, um, yeah, my kind of takeaway is it really doesn't matter what this says.
Well, it's giving a, it's laying out a, it's laying out a path, but I'm not going to recommend that we make any investment, any true investment, until it's been approved by town meeting. I don't feel like it would be appropriate for me to start redirecting our resources when the plan isn't approved yet.
If we, if we get timely response, if we get timely response from what we're doing, is there any possibility, if we get timely response and they don't have a lot of comments that we have to respond to, that we could go to the annual? Or we thinking that it's definitely gonna be the fall?
I would like to put it on the annual. I mean.
Is, is there anything that we can do at this point to move up the timeline? I mean, if it, if nobody has any other questions and they say, all right, if everybody else in the board says, okay, we'll just go with this and get a file to get it done, then, um, I'd say just get it filed. And if we can get it on earlier so that we have a little bit faster time and not to worry about the comment period. Just put the comment period in, that, you know, say that we put out a public comment, that we have our ENF out and this is what we're doing. I mean.
So I had to step out early for the county, uh, assembly meeting, and I missed the discussion. But this is predicated on, like, taking, like, not doing any work at all or not having the comment period fall between, like, December and January. I mean, is that, is that really necessary?
Uh, I think the idea was to try to avoid it around, have the major, have the comment period fall around between Christmas and New Year's was not an ideal scenario. But that's, that's, that's like a two-week period. So I don't know if there's any other, if there's, I don't know if there's any other comment period that we could do that would make it fine, except for the environmental monitor, the environmental monitor publication, there's, there's submittal dates. I don't, we, we only have the later submitted dates. We don't have the earlier. We don't have any submittal dates. We had in our last thing that where it could be done earlier, which we were considering. We were considering, there was an earlier filing, I wanna say, like, November twenty-second, that, I don't know what this, I'd have to go back to the prior.
There was an earlier filing of eleven fifteen.
Let's see.
Uh, eleven twenty-two, the publication.
Right, that's the publication.
Yeah.
Which.
The submittal date was eleven fifteen.
Eleven one to eleven fifteen.
Yeah.
So when's your comment period? It's files by, it's monitored publication date.
It's eleven twenty-two.
ENF comments twelve thirty-one, is that when they begin or end?
No, for those dates, the ENF comments is twelve twelve.
Okay.
Kate, can you confirm the twelve twelve is the date when all, when the comment period closes?
Correct, for an ENF.
And that twelve, December twenty-third is when the comment period closes for the EIR comments?
Right, and the ENF decision.
Correct.
And then the EIR decision is at the end of the year, twelve thirty.
Correct. The concern with this filing is that we would miss the environmental justice pre-notification period. So this one doesn't give you enough time, if you can see, it's being highlighted. The eleven twenty-two, twenty twenty-four environmental monitor posting date does not give you the forty-five day pre-notification.
Okay.
You need to, then, we, we've essentially, I'm gonna strike this one as missed it. The next earlier window that you'd be able to do would be twelve eleven. We might have just missed the official forty-five day for this one. I just have to get the date calculator out.
Let me see.
Environmental monitor of twelve twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is gonna give you most likely the official full forty-five day pre-notification. And this was the window where last workshop, one of the decisions made was to avoid the public comment period falling between mid-December and mid-January, which this option of filing, publishing in the, filing by December sixteenth for publishing in the monitor on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, puts the public comment period squarely in that mid-December to mid-January window.
Yeah, but.
With comments being due by January first twenty, sorry, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five for the ENF and comments for the EIR for our special project review falling January twenty-second.
Yeah, but that gives, that gives from January second to January thirteenth. There's plenty of time in January for people to make comments. It's kind of not in that breakout period.
Right.
And the, um, even the one before that, I mean, I think that one's fine, or the twelve seventeen, the, the. I, I, I think the one one to one fifteen, I think that's too late. I don't think that was our intention. I think our intention was to sort of avoid the major comment period coming between, say, December thirtieth and December thirty-first. As long as there's time on either end, I, I, I'm fine. And I'd rather move it forward and try to get to the annual. I don't see, um.
So Kate, can I confirm if we, if we shoot for the publishing in the monitor on December twenty-third, we will still be able to meet our obligations for the EJ pre-notification period? And comments on, comments will be, all comments will be due back by January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five?
For the, let me just scroll back up. You would receive, ENF comments would close.
On the thirteenth.
On the thirteenth?
January thirteenth. You'd receive a MEPA.
Decision.
If only, if their review is faster, then you would receive the certificate from MEPA as early as January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. If because of the special project review period, they require more time, the, the worst, worst case of that filing would be January twenty-ninth. But yes, this particular, I'm gonna highlight.